Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for the warm welcome. I myself, Mukerani, working as an assistant professor in the Department of Electronics and Instrumentation Engineering. She is at Iron Engineering College. I work in the areas of process control, instrumentation, industrial automations and robotics. Now I have a deep interest in AI, ML and deep learning. My research mainly focuses on fall diagnosis and prognosis in industrial processes using deep learning technique. Today, I am really excited to present on a topic called cobots in industries enhancing efficiency and safety. So today we will explore how these cobots are redefining the industrial processes not by just replacing. It's not audible. Yeah, so we are going to explore how these cobots. How these cobots. Are redefining the industrial processes not by just replacing the human completely. But it work alongside with robots alongside. So that is used to enable the more safer and more safety and smarter environment. So I am going to focus on leveraging robotic simulations and digital twins for smart automations. So we know that the cobots are not only for the transition of industrial automations. But it also makes a factory more smarter, more safer and more responsive to the factory real time demand also. So let's dive into the topic. So by end of this presentations, you can able to understand the role of cobots in modern industries. And you know how it's very efficient and safety in this modern industries. And we are going to have a lot of robot simulations that support for safety and efficiency environment. Then we are going to see a beautiful platform, powerful platform like digital twin, AR, VR and cloud simulations. And finally, we are going to apply these insights through interactive case studies. So here is a quick overview of what we will be covering in today's sessions. Let's start with the basic of understanding what cobot are and how they are. How they differ from the traditional robot and to set the basic foundations. Then we will be seeing the best efficiency and safety of cobot in industries. Then we will transition into the world of robotic simulations. So we are going to see the powerful tools like digital twin, VC, that is virtual commissioning and hardware in loop. Then we are going to see the basics of the simulations, what are the simulations are used to for this robotic industries. Followed by cloud robotic simulations. And you are going to die all this in digital transformations and finally concluded with the industrial case studies. So I request the participants to please log into slido.com. Here we will have one small poll here. Our cobots and robots are the same thing. Yes, I got one answer. From Bhuvana Bhuvi, that is yes. Any other answer? Am I audible here? Yeah, okay, some problem in slider. So I am moving to the next slide. So I got the answers like a few are. Okay. Yeah, obviously. I got one answer in here. So the cobots and robots are not the same, but both are related with each other. Because we are, the robots are not completely replace the humans, it will work alongside with the human. So now. Am I audible? It's going on now, yeah. So the cobots designed to work alongside the humans, so it will not replace the work completely. It will not take away the human jobs. So it helps a worker to get more smarter and more safest environment in order to give a more safety. And with a lot of productivity also. So because it is embedded with a lot of sensors, live sensors and for the real time safety detections. Then here I have given an example of Dubot CRCs, UR series, ABB and Umi. So. And. So now let's see how this cobot or differ from the traditional robot. So based on this feature, we can defer the cobots from the traditional robot. So the first one is based on this collaboration. So we can see our traditional robots work separately, whereas the cobots works along with the humans. And based on the flexibility, so the traditional robot will be having with one fixed task. For example, if it is in this automations, a factory or like that means it is used only for one particular job. Whereas in cobots, it can be easily programmed. For example, if your cobot is used for palletizing work or if it is using for labeling workings, we can easily reprogram it. And we can use it for the several applications also. And especially this is used in the bar, we are shifting the factories and all those things. So by this, we can reduce the cost time. Then based on this safety. The traditional robots require cages, it works inside the fences. Whereas the cobot work in the benchtop, then it shares a workspace with the humans, so integrated with a lot of sensors and all those things. And finally, about the deployment, the traditional robots is time consuming, whereas your cobots is quick and modular. So this visuals highlights the application software cobots in various industry. So here I have listed the few applications, let's start from the manufacturing. So in manufacturing, cobots are using, why? Because means it does lot of activities, it's like assembling the parts, packaging. Then palletizing and all those things, materials handings, wherever the high human physical activities required means. That cases we are implementing the cobot. And the next industry, where is the very important industry healthcare industries. It's play a supporting role for doctors, it's to patients' cares etc. And wherever the steady and precious thing is needed, that conditions the cobot are used. Then the another important thing is the logistic and warehousing. It will do managing part, packaging and palletizing, stacking etc. So wherever to streamline the operations there, we are using this cobot. And not only in this, it's having wide variety of applications, right from food processing, agriculture, automotives and aerospace and all those things. So here, this slide shows the four important core strength of the benefits of cobots in industries. So ultimately, we are focusing on efficiency and safety. This is a very, very important factors in industries. So based on this enhanced efficiency, wherever the repetitive task is needed or wherever the precision with the fewer errors needed. We will incorporate a robot in there and improve safety, so avoid collisions, safe interactions with the humans. And increase productivity, because many factories are running 24/7. So working alongside with the human, we can increase the productivity. And the another major core strength is flexibility and adaptability. So we can easy program and reprogram cobot for several applications as per the factory demands and market demands. So the first thing. Efficiency is increased with the help of the cobot in industry means by having these kinds of things and it reduces operator fatigue. Both here cobots and robots are work together. So they will share their workspace with the human. So maximum part like a physical activities, the cobot will take place, take over the jobs like lifting, packing, labeling, screwing etc. So by this, we can reduce the muscle strains and that is an increasing, sorry decreasing in this. Injuries, especially in the humans or the workers working in the shift based operations. So the next one is like speeding up repetitive tasks. Here the robot do lot of repetitive tasks without any errors and most precise also. It works in a consistent speed, so we can increase the productivity also. And scaling 24/7 operations. This is especially useful in a process industries, whereas the downtime is very costly. And enabling just in time manufacturing, so already mentioned, we can program it and reprogram it easily according to our factory demand. So the best example here I have given is CR 16 cobot that is used for palletizing. So its payload capacity is 16 kg and the work environment that is space is from just 1000 mm to 1200 mm. So it has a predefined stacking platform. So by. Dubot Studio Pro, you can directly install the cobot without any coding knowledge is required. So no coding knowledge is required, directly the user can pick and drop the pallet inside it. And we can simulate and we can use it on that platform. So this is not only a mission, so the cobot is not only a mission, it's like a productivity partner for the industries. So the another important factors next to the efficiency is safety, because every industry is concentrating on the safety path. So the here the cobots are designed with the power and the force limitations technology. It's impacted with a lot of sensors and live sensors, so it will track all the parameters, live data. It will keep on accumulating the data and tracking the data. So based on the data, the cobot will act. So it will directly interact with the humans without any major hazard, it can see a safe manner. So the another safety is vision based obstacles avoided. So here the cobots are designed with cameras and depth sensors to identify the any obstacles in the path or any slowdown operations like that. Then. So based on this, the cobot will identify the object and it will start or stop whenever the obstacles is detected. So automatically it shall change its path also. Then proximity monitoring with the safe scheme, that is the proximity and ultrasonic sensors will be used. So it will kind of detect a human in safer manner and it will work along with the humans. So the best example is Foxconn. So the Foxconn industries is used for testing the circuits. So by that, they are avoiding the risk of the static charges on the human. So now in this section, we are going to know more about this robotic simulations. So what is robotic simulations means? Before bringing a real cobot onto the factory flow, we first want to check, we want to test the robot in virtual environment. That is called the robotic simulations. It's more about like a digital lab that we can test the cobot or test the robot and validate the robot. And then through this platform, this robotic simulations, we can create our layout sections. And we can set the safest zone in what path it has to go like that. And even we can able to measure the cycle times also, how many times the task has to repeat and all those things. So for this, these things, we need a tool to implement the simulations. So we have to use Unreal Engine, that is with the for 3D visualizations, creating scenes in that. And simulating 3D animations and robotic system toolbox. So this robotic system toolbox is very, very important toolbox, where you will have the major part like taking a decisions, a control path, planning path. And modeling, all those things will be taken part in this robotic system toolbox. So once with the help of this toolbox, you can able to test the robot and validate that robot without touching any real physical hardware. So during an initial stage at zero cost, you can able to create your own cobot and test on all those things. If everything is ready, you can say to the directly impart your cobot onto the factory, so it's smooth sailing from day one. So coming to the next one, why this robot simulation is so important? Well, basically this robot simulation is like a safe test, testing ground. Where we will try to do everything what we want, like a trial and error. So this much speed have to given or this is a grip of the robot in the arm for the radius, how much radius it have to move or return. How it have to pick and place the object, so something like that. So everything, we will try everything virtually. And we will simulate a robot how to react to that particular situations. If it, if your cobot find any difficulties or find any problem means we fix it right there easily and at the earlier stages. One superb thing here is it's like superb real, that is very important. Because we use a 3D imaging for visualizations, so we can able to see a full robot interactions, how the real ones look like. So we can easily validate the robot with the zero cost. And once everything is done, we can directly impart that robot, cobot into a factory flow. So the next one is the role of MATLAB and Simulink in robotic simulations. So this is very, very important, because the MATLAB and Simulink act as a backbone for this robotic simulations. Because it's going to work as a based on this model based development. We are going to create the entire robot based on this, what are the sensors, saturators and the physics content and all those things. So everything we are going to digital twin creation, then we are going to use a beautiful tool like a robotic tools. Where we are going to do the control algorithms, control decisions, planning, modeling, everything. And this multi domain integration is very, very important, because we can use in the multidisciplinary domains like a mechanical domain, electrical domain control. And even software ITs also, we can implement. Control and even software ITs also, we can implement this simulations of that platform. And the next important thing is early testing and optimizations. So now we have done all the control part and algorithms, so physically how it has to the physical behavior of the cobot. And we have set the parameters, in what extent it has to work, uh and we will be having a desire path for that. So everything will be set and also we will be testing in this platform and we can easily optimize also. And finally, the deployment, once the simulated thing is ready for this, we can able to easily generate this into a code. And we can embed it into a real time operating systems for our different applications, even if it is working for the factory. Or any industry work or in for any research work, we can directly deploy into a code, then generate into a code. So this is an end to one robotic simulations workflow, it starts from a simulating control logic. And ends with Unreal Engine's three D visualization. So let's start with the simulating control logic here. Uh you are you are you are going to import or feed a input from this real time data and all. So like that, uh it is used with this historical data, we have to fetch the CSV file or any uh file in it. So once the imported data into the control logic, we can tell how to how the robot to work. And how we have to behave in the problematic conditions and all those things. Then the output of this control logic is given to a robotic system toolbox. As it is a poor uh toolbox for generating this cobot. Uh so it does all the planning, modeling of that forsake and everything, so that will be taken part in this robotics system toolbox. The output of this controller box is given to the simulating three D animation. Excuse me. So this is a end to end robotic simulations workflow. Uh so it starts from the simulating control logic and end with the Unreal three D visualizations. So these four uh flow charts will going to give a major part in the creating the cobot in simulation part. So let's start with the simulating control logic. So in simulating control logic, here we are going to import uh. Uh data for cobot, how to react and how to get the data from the real time applications and all those things. So the output of the control logic is given to a robotic system toolbox, this is a core part of the toolbox, the same way you can create. Uh planning, modeling and taking a control decisions and all those things in fact in this robotic system. The output of this control box is given to a simulate three D animation. This will connect both the controlled output as well as Unreal engines. So in Unreal Engines or three D installations, we are going to create a three D scenes uh where how the real robot will look like. So once all these three things, all these things are done, so we can easily uh test the robot and validate the robot. Without touching any physical hardware uh at the initial stage of the cobot uh creations, then. Yeah, so this is a very important powerful tool, that is the best example for this uh. Three D Unreal uh visualizations engines that has been picking cobot simulations in Unreal Engines using robotic system toolbox and simulating three D animations. So this is look like a pick and place robot, but it is not actually a pick and place robot. It's a complex challenge robot, so here this robot task is used to uh identify and retrieve an object from the bin. Where the objects are placed in the random manner, so even in the random orientations also. So ultimately, it using of a three types of things, one is a vision system. So the second one is trajectory planning and third one is avoid collisions. So in vision system, the robot has, the cobot has to find out what object, which object, based on that, it will do some class classifications. Based on the size, based on the color and based on the orientation. So the first important challenge for the cobot is to for the vision system, so it has to identify and classify the object first. Then moving to the second one, that is a trajectory planning, in the trajectory planning, it has to calculate the path, safest path. Without doing any uh errors, so that is very important in this scoreboard. And the third one is avoid collisions because when the normal robots are do lot of disadvantages based on this collisions one. So this cobots avoid collisions, uh it will more uh work freely and smoothly manner. So this is the best example of this then and this is done by. So this is a simulations workflow, so it start, we are going to create an Unreal uh Unreal. Engines, we are going to create the three D scenes, that three D scenes will be captured in the perceptions with the computer vision toolbox. That is a very computer, very important toolbox where you can uh create or acquire all the images as what cobot is. Doing live and that is given to the motion planning and robotic system toolbox, our core toolbox. And that is works along with that co-simulations platform, that is our robotic simulations platform. So this is just a block diagram representations of the pin picking cobot simulations in Unreal Engines. And coming to the another most important powerful tool in modern industries, in modern industrial automation that is digital twin. So in the name itself, it is implies that we are going to twin the entire uh object or physical object. Now we are talking about the cobot, so this we are going to recreate and replicate uh the entire cobot. In this platform, that is digital twin platform, it's like a virtual mirror of a cobot, fine? So what is a digital twin actually? So it's a virtual replica of a physical cobot, not only a cobot, it will create the entire uh. Uh layout sessions, if you are designing for any industrial automation factory, so it will create right from the A to Z, the entire factory layout also. So and in entire environment, it's mirrors the cobot movements, sensor data and perform in a simulated space. So the evolution of the digital twin concept, it was originated by NASA in the year earliest two thousands. The first implemented for the spacecraft simulations uh and monitoring during the mission takeoff and all those things. Then later in the year two thousand ten to fifteen, it is involved in this industrial automation part. Uh for manufacturing and automating sectors, integrating the digital twin for productions and optimization sectors. Then during two thousand fifteen to eighteen, it's in uh involved in infrastructures integrations for smart building and constructions, critical infrastructures. Uh then from two thousand eighteen to till present, it is used in wide varieties that is across industrial expansions, widespread adoptions of healthcare. Energy, logistics, bar housing and smart cities and all. So about the future directions of the digital twin technology, so the moving towards autonomous digital twins with advanced AI decision making and capabilities. So it's going to allow work along with this artificial intelligence and mission learning techniques. So this is a digital twin technologies enabling, so right from this IOT because uh we are going to. In software, so these are the technologies impacted in the digital twins, how it is work? So like the digital twin is like a very uh, it's like a gaming gamifications. So uh who are all interested in gamifications and creating a mimic the design, it's more related to like a scatter. Almost you are all know aware of the scatter, right? Um similar to that one, but it will communicate also. The another major important thing is it will predict uh the things, it will not wait for the problem to occur, it will predict in the future. So as like the other robotic simulations, as like the other toolbox, robotic toolbox, Unreal Engines. So the major advantage of this digital twin is it will predict the fault in earlier stage itself. So it will identify uh the remaining useful life of an instrument, so easily it will give the remaining useful life of the cobot. Or any sensor you are designing, or any compressor or any processor you are dealing with, that means the physical object, it will give you the remaining useful life of that. Because uh we are going to deal with the historical data as well as the live data. So whereas in the other systematic tools like robotic simulations tools and all, we will be working with the historical data. Whereas this digital twin, we will connect directly with the live data and we will execute. So first it will acquire the real time data and will accumulate all the data slightly, then it will keep on tracking its data. Then once it detects any error is occurring, it will directly stop it right there and we can resimulate the entire object in this platform. So it will predict the future, that it predict the fault, uh it is going to happen in the future. So that is a major advantage of this digital twin in this modern industries. And uh so that's why in many industries, they are using this as asset management, we call this digital twin as an asset management. So by this digital twin, uh you can able to create, it will be user friendly for all the layer of this uh map. Process, like for example, if operator is working in that industry means because uh he is not, he might not be an engineer. Or he may not be know aware of that artificial intelligence and machine learning and all those things, one way he can able to control with the help of this app, right? So for that level also, that we can able to create the digital twins applications level for operators. And then for the engineers levels, like creating a three D imaging, so gamifications and mimic the entire uh stations like that. So it is working with one more software called Unity. So in that Unity and cloners, you can able to create the full background of that entire thing. So there you can easily replicate your physical objects and physical layout, your complete entire process. And the next part, so if you are dealing with a large set of the clients or anything means in the uh in a big manner. So we are moving to the cloud platform, so that is a cloud simulations using a digital platform. So there uh you are going to generate only a one solution, that solutions will be given to different lines. For example, the oil and gas company or any manufacturer companies like that. So you are going to create one V one thing, so that will be given to many clients also and the major drawback is. So sorry, the major advantage of the digital twin technologies as like the robotic simulations and other toolbox, we have a efficiency, safety. Flexibility, adaptability, optimizing, testing and all those things is applicable for this also. But major add on advantage for this digital to vendors are predictive maintenance and future prevention. And real time monitoring, that is a remote diagnostics. So as like the previous ones, so efficiency and safety is a major factor in industries, modern industries. So that plays an important role in here also in digital twin platform and flexibility validations, we can program, reprogram, we can resimulate. Wherever the problem is occurs, we can resimulate directly and we can identify all those. Accelerate the risk assessment and productions, we can increase the productivity also, adaptability also. The thing add on path that is predictive maintenance, we call it as a predictive maintenance access management for this industrial automations. So uh we don't want to wait the failures to occur, it will predict the remaining useful life and it will predict the failures which is going to happen in the future. So based on that, we can able to create at right in the digital platform first and then we will implement the same in the real time cobot. So that is a very important advantage of digital twin and real time remote diagnostics. So where is it, like the field will be at some places, for example at Rainyuda or something else, we can sit in our place itself and we can monitor. We can do all the diagnostic process. So that is a major advantage of using digital twin and modern industries. So this visuals uh highlights the. Digital twin technology along with. So simulations and testing, as that's what we are focusing on, so simulations without using or inventory or without spending any money. We are doing in this digital platform and predictive maintenance, as I said, we can reduce the downtime. Then data analytics, because you are dealing with the live data, not only with the historical data, we are dealing with the live data. So uh even we can use, we can create go with the power BI tools also, visualizations, dashboards, all those things. Data improving cobot for increasing efficiency and safety and integrated with industry five point O technology, right now the industries are doing. Then another important thing is virtual commissioning. What is mean by virtual commissioning means that is testing uh before touching the cobot. So this is what actually the robotic simulations and digital twin is doing. So uh the real robot before coming into the factory flow, it has to check how it is communicating with the. So, the real robot before coming into the factory flow, it has to check how it is communicating with the hardware. What you are having in your industry, whether it is a controller or P L C or D C S or whatever it is. So, first it has to communicate easily without any bugs or without any delay. We have to check that and not only with the P L C along with this human interfaces, human machine interfaces. You, you, you might create the user interfaces, UI and all those things. So, you have to check the cobot has to easily communicate with the controller, your hardware as well as in the H M I systems. So, this by using this V C, we can simulate this interactions, everything onto the flow. Like communicating directly to your P L C and your H M I systems and all those things. So, how it works means first you can able to train your cobot, test your own cobot, validate your cobot in this digital environment. Then, how it is responding to your commands, like what command you are giving from the cobots, et cetera. Then, if scenarios without hardware damage, that's what we are not going to touch any hardware physically. We are going to test everything in virtual platform. So, this is a, everything is simulated in the virtual environment, your cobot, your controller, that is your P L C or it might be a D C S or then your H M I system. So, here, instead of the P L C, if you are dealing with the D C S control, the digital distributed control system means. It have one more additional thing, that is your O P C, we call it as an O P C, that is O L E for process control. So, O L E for process control means object linking and embody. Entire real time objects directly, if you are using a process called a multi, multi process, you are using a flow process. Level process all together in one single process means that we are going to that embed that all, we are going to link all the physical project into an object into an O L E system. Then, that O L E system for process control, O P C connected to a server. So, it's a main thing is that O P C is a server, we can connect N number of the clients to that. So, our D C S or T L C might be the client for that. So, you can directly embed all your physical live. Into our stations, into our. Virtual environment. Early and easily because based on the. Then accelerate R O I with the faster. Or physical damage. This mainly used in bar housing and manufacturing industries that the repetitive task, palletizing task. And lifting, doing lot of physical works like that. So, then, then and there, they are using this kind of cobots. Another important thing is H I L, hardware in loop. So, this is the final stage before we deploy our final cobot onto the factory flow. So, this H I L, we are going to connect a virtual cobot into this part. So, here we will be having another M S E, that is a manufacturing execution systems and barrels execution system. That system will send the commands to the cobot, your real time hardware, that is P L C or D C S. So, then that it will receive the command and process them to the cobot. So, the cobot will work accordingly, it will respond what command is given from the P L C. Then, the everything will be visualized in the platform, so engineers observe everything in the, in his place. And he can fine tune if anything is goes wrong means he can do some control algorithms and all those things. So, this is H I L in loop. So, we can create everything in this single simulated virtual environment band, that is simulated M S E and W S. The real controller, that is P L C or D C S and everything will communicate and interacted with the cobot. So, the main advantage of this hardware in loop is text control, real controller logic without risking the equipment. Because we are not dealing any hardware here, just this is the final stage before the deployment of the cobot onto the P L. So, we are not going to touch any physical hardware. So, we, we can do a validate safety and timing before deployment and reduce commissioning times and costs. So, now, so this is a example, powerful tool used by, that is the digital twin for palletizing solutions. Digital twin solutions for palletizing solutions. The left-hand part is what we have created in the cloud platform, that is myrobot.cloak. So, it's an open source only, you can directly see that, you can create it by it your own. And we have to deploy the same in the factory flow. So, the right-hand side is the final deployment of this palletizing one with the help of the digital twin. So, here, that is nothing but a Dubot C R sixteen, that is, it's the palletizing operation. This palletizing operation is designed specifically for the universal robots, that U R series, for all U R series and C R series. So. Now, yes, as I mentioned, so this is a cloud platform, it is designed by rocketform dot Norway. So, you can directly go to myrobot.cloak. So, this is an open source software, cloud-based software, you can directly design your own cobot without any single cost, zero, at zero cost. So, this is basically, you can directly sign in with the help of your Google account. It will be asking a basic details, like what is your name, what is your role, for what purpose you are going to create the cobot? Like for what organizations, what production rate, something like that, so basic details. And it will ask you to create one logo for your organization. So, just create a logo and the sign in with your normal Google credentials account, then you can view this one. So, this is the left-hand part, it having of your dashboard. So, it shows your production rate, inventory rate and organization's rate. So, in that production rate, you can able to see what product you are going to use in what pattern. And you are going to create your own simulations, then. You are going to install robot, if you are already do, done with some robot needs, then you can take that robot and you can install along with some license. So, if you are not having means, you can create, create your own robot. Then, Pali program, so Pali program is nothing but it's a palletizing program for, it is designed only for this palletizing, right? Then, we can do the Pali program settings also. For inventory, you can configure your robot, you can configure your software, you can configure your hardware also in this cloud platform. So, this is my dashboard, so I have created one small demo for here. So, this is my page, dashboard page. So, here you can see the four pallets, one is the installed robot simulation, what product is and what pattern, in what, in which pattern you have to do the palletizing work. So, here I have created a four simulations pattern. So, this is a simulations pattern, I have created that tab book, tab book one, food and toys. So, you can, while it's like just filling a form, there is no need for any coding, any background of U R series and all those things, no need anything. So, you can just, it's look like a form filling only, you can directly enter in what speed, in what pattern, in what way it has to arrange. So, that is enough here. So, you have to select the patterns, what type of hardware and what type of software and everything. So, once it is done, it will be take only a couple of minutes to create and the once it is ready, you will get the status as completed. So, this is my simulations one. So far, in the Pali window, so you have to give a specifications, you have to give a specifications for the Pali window. So, what product you are going to use. So, select in what's the length with height and in what pattern you have to arrange that. So, everything, it's as like said, it's like a basic form filling only. So, this is about the product, then moving to the pattern. So, this right arrow and left arrow, you can easily scroll the arrows. So, in what way, so from this you can selected any one of the arrows. You have to select how many boxes, how, what's the weight of the boxes and you can label. So, if you want to see the orientations of the label means we can select that also, it's having a dropdown options. Whether it is in the top view or in the side view or in the, it doesn't matter, so like that you can give it. And how many rows you have to give, so everything will be given in this pattern method and region. Currently for, is a, two days back, I have simulated this. So, currently it shows that for India, it is not available, but I have mailed to that Norway things. They will said within twenty four hours, they will give that. So, you have to select the regions and once it is done, you can start simulating your robot. So, even I got that one, so the Pali will initiate the user experience. So, it's like, there is, we can reduce the downtime, like there is no need for waiting for a long time till the package is coming in the conveyor belt. So, then seems as integrations, the integrations like that, a hooking, the looping, the gripping and all those things. So, we can minimize downtime and maintenance also and enhance the product offering. So, this is a wow, final simulations of my pattern, palletizing pattern. So, it took ten minutes and twenty six seconds then to complete the part. So, it's total of eighty boxes, that is because I have given the most safest thing. So, here you can use the maximum speed achieved with the safest setting pointer. So, if we increase, that means for another food processing simulations, I have used fastest one. So, for that means it take only two minutes to arrange the pattern. So, here it will give, what is the case for seconds and all those things. So, at the end, you will get all the detail, what you have filled in that before doing all those things. So, it gives about the hardware details, what is the base type, what is the convenient type, what is the robot type, how lifting it is, how many cages and all those things. And the next one is gives about the installation setup. So, lifting column duty cycles, how many times it has to repeat, something like that. So, everything will be given in this part. Then, this section is given about the software we used. Well, so what about the robot O S, then the Pali settings, the fixed approaches, box free height and all those things will be get it in the software part. Then, power conception, so power conception for the entire thing, so the robot right from the base to the level, the next level. And the robot movement load, it's going to taking from the conveyor belt and place it in the palletize part, so something like that. So, how much power is this taken, so the vacuum load without doing anything. So, all sum together, it is around zero point one five five only. And it gives a safety one, so based on this, so in the first row, how it is arranging and during from the, from the next part, that is second row, third row up to fifth row. So, this will give us about this in X axis, Y axis and Z axis. The safety collar and this is a final summary of the cobot, the simulations, what we have created in this palletizing tool, myrobot.cloak. So, it gave entire details about the product, it gives entire detail about the palette and pattern also. So, the key features of this Dubot C R one sixes, it's, we can go for this heavy payload capacity, it's up to sixteen K G. And flexible working radius, as I mentioned, it's around from just thousand M M to thousand two hundred M M only. And we can easily plug and play accessories. If you want to shift the flow factory to the next unit or something like that means we can easily reprogram it and we can take it to that part. So, benefits of Dubot is it can increase efficiency and space optimization and safety and collaborations. So, the another important thing that is used in this one is not on, they are use this digital twin platform for palletizing one. So, how they are using this means, the first important thing is to reduce the time actually. So, their workers are doing this part for a one week. But after doing the simulations part, by creating this digital twin palletization, that one week work was literally came down to just eight tasks to complete the entire task. So, that is a beautiful and that is a advantage of having this digital twin palletizing one. So, another thing, this is an Unity. So, as I mentioned, so this is for the second level of operations, so for the engineers and for the control systems and all those things. So, Unity digital twin in machineries and robotic industries, you can create your, your entire factory, not only the cobot. The entire, the things, the workspace is right from this A to Z, the entire thing we create in this Unity platform. So, you can see this conveyor belt, the boxes and a lot of benches and all those things can be easily created in this digital twin platform with the help of this Unity and cloner software. And moving to the next one, so, so far, the basic operator level, we can develop an applications, there are a lot of applications are there. So, we can easily create in a, within a short span of time. Then, moving to the next level of a controller part and the engineer's part, that is what we have discussed so far about this robotic simulations, robot system toolbox. Then, our digital system toolbox and all those things. And moving to the next level, if you want to go for the largest level, like having a huge system. So, we obviously we have to go for this cloud level one, so that is cloud robotic simulation. So, here, we can use this with A W S and Azure platform, then enables, there we can use with a lot of A I and A M L. We can enable that also. So, the best example is already we have seen, that is bin picking, because it's a complex challenging robot. It will do lot of things, it's right from the vision system, avoid collisions, trajectory planning and all those things. Then, arm testing in logistics, so this is what you are doing in the huge size. And the next one, even if it is cloud bursting is happened means it will easily predict also. So, whenever there is a huge spike is coming means it is easily predicted and that time it will reduce the local connections lines also. For example, ultimately, if you are using any things, for example, the first clients is from this oil and gas industry means the higher priority will be given to that industry one. Then, there is a path for then another client and then is another path for the parallel, the who are all in the loop line. So, ultimately, so this is what my key takeaway is simulations. So, simulation is plays a very important role. So, with the help of the simulations, we can easily driven the efficiency and safety of the modern industrial automations. So, that is what you can predict the cycle bottleneck, simulations is used to identify the errors, used to reduce the downtime and all those things. So, you can, if there is any insufficiency in the cobot logs, we can directly resimulate and correct it and we can use it on the real time applications. Then, test F T responses, validate layout and interactions. And finally, the cobots are deployed faster with the greater confident and fewer errors, saving times and reducing, reducing risk. So, we are going to tie all these things in this digital platform, so digital transformation. Our simulation plus artificial intelligence plus cloud plus digital twin, given into a smarter automation. So, enables adaptive, safe and scalable workflow in industries. So, bridging manual expertise with the machine learning and artificial intelligence and faster deploy, safe and scalable workflow. So, many case, case studies are there. So, for example, this B M W, the interior assembly with the cobots are doing with the same thing. And Dubot, what we have discussed earlier. And G E healthcare, then Foxconn, it's used for electronics testing and all those things in order to reduce the static charges on human. Then, then another thing, so manufacturing, assembly, inspections, material handling, wherever the huge physical activity which is not done by the workers or operators, that time the cobot is taking place. Then, healthcare, assisting surgeons and patient's care hangs with us. Wherever there, we have to do a streamline of operations and all those things. Logistics warehouse, that is palletizing, packaging, stocking, et cetera, they are using this cobot. And so, another simple example, it's making a coffee also, the coffee machines with the help of the cobot. And the right-hand side part, it's similar to like, it's a shadow cobot, it's work according to the shadow like that. So, whenever, while I'm preparing this slide, I got one previous thought, who are all the nineties kids can able to see this one, right? So, we have seen this in one movie in nineties, what movie is that? Can you able to use the right-hand side part, that shadow cobot? Jeans, right? Yeah, that was my, I got that idea. So, then, yeah, now I got. I'm doing that I O T data analytics and digital twin technology professional course, rightly I am pursuing that course. At Crayon Technology I T M, so right now I am in the project. So, once almost in next to one hour or in a couple of month, I can able to finish this certifications. Along with my one of the colleague, Miss Premalata and. So, the another important thing is that is C R and V R, I'm taking right now. So, one of the company, client company at Crayon Technologies are using this digital twin for software companies. Uh that is confidential, I couldn't able to tell the name of the company. So we are doing for that also, not only in IT sector, we can able to create that entire plant, oil and gas plant also, one of the client. So I'm working in that part also. And one more that is assembling the part that in IT sector, IT company. Hardware company. So key takeaways. Uh simulation is the basic and important foundations for securing safe and smarter operations in industrial automations. So the digital twin that bridge the gap between your theory to practice. Because what industry expert is not only the theory content, they need actual practical knowledge. So then obviously, because we are nowadays, we are dealing with IOT, AI and ML, so cloud and AI is a very important technology. And this is very, very important because it has to interact freely with the uh your hardware, whatever hardware you are using, whether it's a PLC or DCS and something like that. And finally, you can the faster return of investment and safer operation and made a smarter robotic system. So this is what the smarter automations with the simulations, we have discussed so far about the robotic simulations, digital twin, AR VR, cloud simulations, uh VC and H I L. So yes, that's all. Any doubts or any questions here? Yeah. Sorry? No, no, it's not a platform. It it's another technology, you have to use it uh in the real time industries. That's like what we are seeing in this robotic simulations, it's like MATLAB and all those. Not only a robotic simulator, it can replicate any virtual object, whatever, even it is a uh a remote or even it is a pen, whatever we are seeing in the real life, we can replicate or we can recreate it in the digital twin platform with the help of the unity and cloner software. It's having back front end and back end. So in the front end, we will wish uh see only the it's like a SCADA screen, what we see in the control room. The control room and the count, the operator will sit inside the controller and they will view all those things. What is happening in the field and what is happening inside the uh field. Some sometimes the field will be in the far 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 away the distance. For example, it's more than a thousand kilometers or something like that. Even we are doing, they are doing for this onsite uh project also. And wherever in Saudi and all those things for oil and gas companies. So we can recreate the entire plant in this platform and we can work on it, we can simulate with that. Uh so we have some hardware part, we have hardware part. So the hardware part will communicate with the real time uh engines and will collect all the real time data into that platform. And will have the data analytics part also. So data analytical team is also working behind this digital twin uh technology. So everything you can do. So if you are doing with, if you want to incorporate artificial intelligence and machine learning uh algorithms inside this means you can use go with the Python and all those things. So for handling of data also, they are using a Mongo D P for data handling and all those things. So there is a lot of uh in this field, there are so many opportunities and scopes out there. If the student or anyone is interested in doing a game, like creating uh animations and all those things. They can create, go with the three D designs, scenes, AR VR and all those things. That is the one part. Then another part who is uh very good in knowledge for core knowledge just means they can go with along with the basics of electronics, electrical, how the instruments will work in the industries, that engineers is also there. And moving to the next part, the AI and uh the CS based students are also there. Then we are going to use for the power BI for data analytics, data analytics services also using. So altogether, it's like a core pack, so you can uh whichever you want, you can select it on your own. Because based on your passions or what interest you have, based on your knowledge. So this uh gives an entire solutions for a company or industries, what we are looking for. Then anything else, ma'am? Any doubt? So if you want to learn any new technology or any new tool means try to get into this because it have a lot of opportunities. So much of scopes are available in this part. You can use it for your own research work also because like that only I have entered into this platforms and I have gone this opportunities. Because I'm dealing with the one uh highly nonlinear chemical process. So uh this is uh I'm using a tech process, that is Tennessee cement process, it's a highly nonlinear chemical process. So many researchers are doing a research on this benchmark process, but it's a simulated benchmark process. So I couldn't directly go and uh do the some testing or collecting the data and all those things. So already the simulated data is available with me, but I don't know how to handle the data and I don't know how to deal with it. Because it's already done, because it is at US, uh the processes at US Tennessee state. So I couldn't be able to do some testing or whatever it is without any knowledge, without zero knowledge, I started my research work and almost I completed that. With the help of this digital twin, that is Creon Technology at I T M, uh it almost on the completing stage. Uh because whenever it's like I have just given only the C to you, there is lot of things uh behind this digital twin. So you can learn it by your own or else you can contact them and you reach them. It is also, the tutorials are also available in YouTube. So you can take that. So Unity is an open source, you can directly hear. Digital twin is a platform where you will having a back end, front end with the Unity, cloners, data analytics, IOT and all those things. No sir, only for particular situations only it is and uh other than that you have to do it in the subscription pattern one.
Thank you.
Uh so Vijay Lakshmi ma'am, you have asked me that can digital twin be used for real time pre-processing of uh the data like a noise filtering, missing data handling and anomaly detections? Yes, especially uh that is what actually the digital twin is. Uh you can pre-process everything what you want actually. So you can easily mimic or uh uh create virtual replica of that entire process, entire object, physical object which is available in your real time, you can directly do that. And uh you will be having a real object also. So that will be integrated with your digital twin platforms through the Unity software. Then there you can do a filtering, you can handle the missing data and that is the beauty of digital twin is that anomaly detections. That is wherever the fault is happening, it will predict at the earlier stage itself. It won't wait for the problems to occur, it will predict earlier stage and it will alert the system that like that, this is what the problem is going to happen in the future like that. So it is uh we can easily do the all the pre-processing in the digital twin map and so yes, uh I'll give you the live demo in my robot dot cloud so shortly. And yeah, the Creon Technology is a core company that is uh they are using this digital twin for the several clients like uh oil and gas industry, automobile industries and uh many and IT sectors also. So actually for my research also, they are helping. So now I'll go with that demo of my cobot, my robot dot cloud. So go to Google and type my robot dot cloud. So if you are a fresh user, you can sign up here. I'm already uh using this my cloud. So I'm just logging here. The signup is just a simple thing, you can directly uh login with the help of your Google account. So just by giving a login credentials. So Vijay, email. Yeah. So this is what I have taken the screenshot in my presentation. So this is your uh my uh my robot cloud platform, this was designed by Rocket Phone. So this is a dashboard. So here you can see the production, product, patents, simulations. If you are already having a robot in your hand means you can install here. Pali program, Pali program setting, then robot configuration, software configurations, hardware configurations and all those things. So this is my dashboard. So you have to create a just uh with a simple logo creations. So I have given uh my organization name as research work. So you can be able to see this four palettes here. One is a installed robot, simulation palette, product palette and another one is a patent palette. So I have created a four simulations here. So this is a for simulations I have created past two days. Uh before two days. So this is uh tab box, tab box one, food and toys. So all these things are created. So if you want to create a new one means I'll show you one. So create new. Go with that. So you can have it as a my pattern. Or if you want to go with the dual pattern means, so you can go select this part, dual uh product mode. So I'm selecting this. So give next here. So you have to uh select the hardware configurations, you can go with universal robot twenty uh twenty basic or uh universal robot one zero E basic. So you can select anyone. So I'm going with the just for demo I'm giving here, UR one zero E basic. So its robot is UR one zero E, that gripper is this one, so lifting column, that's high frame, basic and standard and all those things. You have to select this one, give next. Then you have to go for this software configurations. First you have to select the pattern, hardware and software. So software you can select any of this based on the speed, how safe it has to work. Uh if it is faster or fast, custom speed like two fifty, so something like that. So if you want, you you can select any one of this. So I'll go with the fast one, like uh so we'll go with faster. Least restricted, so then give next. So now the patent configuration is here. So this is your hardware configuration, just scroll down and software, taking a Pali one, Pali software versions, it's the latest version. And gripper optimizations, it's in the four way in all the axis. So maximum speed is two thousand five hundred, acceleration is two thousand five hundred and approach distance is thirty. Just keep confirm here. Just name it uh like uh demo and start make simulation. So it is under queue now. It's setting up, you can see the live uh status of that uh simulations what you have created. So once it is completed, it will take some time, that is around two minutes to five minutes. So it give the status hundred percent completed. So here you can see that installed robot, I'm not having any installed robot right now. So this is what the Pali program is. So if you have the program means you can directly use that. This is what the setting, new Pali settings. So you can select this one. So this gives your robot configurations, that is we have two one for the research work. And another one is for software configurations, Pali basics and latest one. And this is your hardware configuration. Now let's see about the simulations. So it's under process, let's see the this one, uh we'll go with the toy. So here you can see the completed part. So this is what I have included in my presentations. So I'll go with the next one. Uh let's take this full. So it's took uh five minutes and forty four seconds. So you can see how your simulated cobot will work in this Pali palletizing software. This is how it will work. So you can directly uh get this also. So it will give the entire status, case is permanent, that is twenty eight point six four. Here this is a safety settings limits that is five thousand speed. So this is a average, this is average minutes per pallet, that is two. So maximum product per pick is eight. So it will give the product details, your paddle palette details, your pattern details. So you can see in what pattern we have to arrange this uh boxes and all those things. So it took five minutes to complete the task. So let's say. Let's check for the our demo sections, yeah, it's just palletizing now. So it will show the status hundred percent palletizing. So once it is done, you will get the So once it is done, you will get the status successfully completed. It's twelve percentage palletizing now. So in this, you can able to see the hardware descriptions, what are the installation setups we have done. And software descriptions, power conception and safety. So how long from X axis to X maximum, Y minimum to Y maximum, similarly Z minimum to Z maximum. And this will give you the entire summary of your palletizing tool. The product detail, pallet detail and pattern detail. So it's just twenty-six percentage. Any other doubts ma'am? For researcher, now only I started my training at Crayon Technology. So like I belong to instrumentation department, so I'm getting a few insight tools and resources from my trainer. He also belongs to instrumentation background. So we are dealing, we are working together in the tech process. My research process, that is Tennessee Eastman process. So I'm getting a few insights and help guidance from my trainer. So it's a simulated benchmark process. So with the help of them, I'm creating a digital twin of my Tennessee Eastman process. So that is what I'm getting a help from my trainer. Any other questions for online participants? And so let's see how it's completed, it's forty-eight percentage only. So once it is completed to hundred percentage, you will get the same status as like this, the other few simulated one. The toys, food and tech boxes and all those things. So shall I close this demo? Thank you, thank you so much. It's my pleasure to be here, thank you so much for the audience, especially in offline as well as in online. Thank you so much for your patience and attentions and the next sessions will be resumed at one thirty P M. Thank you all and my special thanks to the F T P coordinators. And a special and warm thanks to Dr. Kalichalvi ma'am for giving this opportunity. And it's my pleasure to be here, thank you, thank you all.